I'll call the regular scheduled July council meeting uh to order. Want to thank everyone for coming out, uh welcome everyone that's joining us on our social via social media and online. Uh we'll start with our normal in our normal fashion with prayer and uh followed by a pledge of Mr. Woods, if you don't mind, you lead us in prayer.
Yes, let me stand. Our Father in heaven, again we just thank you so much for all of the blessing that you bestowed upon us. We thank again for this night, we thank you, dear master, we're here for the purpose of city business. We just pray, dear master, that you will allow your Holy Spirit to move upon our mind. Dear master, that we would at least see less of ourself and more of city. We just thank you now in Jesus's name, amen.
Please fly with me.
I pray with this to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, in the peaceful, liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you would, call it a roll, Miss Clark.
Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Mr. Golden.
Here.
Mr. Field.
Here.
Alau.
Here.
Mr. McKinney.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Ms. Spinks.
Here.
Stool.
Here. All right, we have one set of minutes to, well, sorry, two sets of minutes to approve. First is the regular scheduled council meeting from June uh twenty twenty-two, so I hope everyone has had the opportunity to look over those minutes. If there are not any corrections or changes to those minutes, I have a motion to approve.
One second.
Crawford's second by Ms. Spinks, if you would cash your votes. Motion carried, next is our special call meeting from June twenty-eighth, uh second reading on our budget, if there are any changes or corrections to those minutes.
Make the motion.
I have a motion to approve on Mr. Lau, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McKinney, if you would cash your votes. Motion carried, um moving on to mayor's report. Uh first want to thank everyone, all the city employees, all of our sponsors for our Fourth of July Red, White and Balliver event. We had a great time, a great turnout, I think everyone enjoyed themselves, thanks to all the council members that were able to attend. Uh we had a great eve- great evening and a great event and looking forward to everybody being back again with us next year. So again, thank y'all so much for coming out and being a part of that. Um next, under my report, as you guys know, we approved for Ms. Harriet Thompson to be our next city judge. And she's here tonight, our general sessions judge, uh Mr. Dan is gonna swear her hand and make her official, so Judge, we'll turn it over to you now.
I tell you, the uh Fourth of July celebration was really nice.
Yeah, I saw you moving your leg a little bit out there. I said, I saw you moving your leg a little bit out there, I think you was enjoying yourself.
Oh man, yeah Caleb's good. All right, um I've got an oath here, if you'll raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Harriet S. Thompson.
I, Harriet S. Thompson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
And the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
That I will administer justice.
That I will administer justice.
Without respect of persons.
Without respect of persons.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As judge of the city of Bolivar.
As judge of the city of Bolivar.
County of Hardeman.
County of Hardeman.
Of the state of Tennessee.
Of the state of Tennessee.
To the best of my skill.
To the best of my skill.
And ability, so help me God.
And ability, so help me God.
This is the eleventh day of July two thousand and twenty-two, congratulations.
Thank you. Tomorrow is the first day of court, I hope I do well.
So I hear it's a new judge in town. Thank you, Ms. Harriet, we're looking forward to working with you, I think all the councils excited about your service.
Working with you all, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, moving on to standing committed reports on the electric department of Ball of Energy Authority Board met June twenty-third. Uh the board approved a one percent rate increase as of ten one twenty twenty-two, approved the fiber drop to home contractor, passed the updated construction cost changes, moved the July board meetings to seven twenty-six, and also want to update everyone on the BEA fiber to home, I'm sorry.
That got changed back to the twenty-fifth.
So back to the twenty-fifth, the board meeting is back on the twenty-fifth, all right. Um electronics hut for Baller has been set, mainland construction has started in Baller area around the second week of July. Then each contractors would be doing the work, so that's an awesome report from BEA to let you guys know that fiber to the home is now happening and they're starting in Baller. Um and working their way throughout the county, so I will please encourage everyone when it's available for you to get it, get it, I know I'm going to, I'm tired of Spectrum messing up, so. I will hope they ain't watching.
They can watch, bear.
Ricky's telling me to stop, but I'll I'll be moving my service, so I'm pretty sure he won't miss me. Uh next, then wrestling gonna come through a little better.
A lot better.
Next, you tell him to Mr. Cliff answer. Yeah, how good's your report, Cliff, is it?
Well, let's see what that goes here. I'm sorry, no, I got it, I got it. Um first of all, Mayor, let's uh go ahead and get the land purchase approval out of the way. Uh the utility board met in May to uh purchase a tract of land that is located over behind the old gas shop there on Jackson Street. Mr. Delphi Hicks owned that, he came to us to see if we'd be interested, and after looking at it, it would do us a whole lot of good to have that property. So the utility board uh approved uh and sent it to council for approval to purchase that property for twenty-five thousand. So, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate a motion on uh carrying through with that property.
And I tell you, we stay, the utility board passes it in May, I'm sorry, it's just not making to you, I completely forgot every meeting since then to put it on the, Cliff has been on me about it. But I, it's definitely needed for the utility department, because they landlocked and they can't expand without that, so.
Do you have a plan of what you're gonna do with the property?
Uh we're gonna take that fence down and extend the fence back in behind, we're gonna tear the property, the house that's on the property down. And then we're gonna take the trees and stuff out, and we're just gonna extend the back property so we can have access to our buildings on the back and rear side, so it's, it'll do us a lot of good.
Is there something in y'all's budget, twenty-five thousand?
Uh actually, it's not in the budget as far as the property, we have contingencies for such, as far as that goes, as far as purchasing of that proper- properties and other entities that we do, uh but no, uh Mr. McKinney, it's not in the budget to to make the purchase.
There won't be no rate increasing?
No, 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 we have money there.
I make a motion, we approve their um proposal.
I have a motion by Mr. Ray, a second by Mr. Lau, if you would cash your votes, and I'm sorry, any other questions on that, if you would cash your votes. Motion carried.
Okay, uh about the rates, the gas rates, they did go down this month, thank goodness, uh last month they were a dollar twenty-eight, they came down to one oh two. Uh hopefully they'll continue to fall, not too optimistic about that, but we'll just keep our fingers crossed and hope for the best on that. Uh the other businesses, uh we did two main line extensions, one on Sandy Springs Road in Middleton and one on Peavon Road, they are complete. Uh finished and we are tying on services now for that. And um also uh another item that I need a motion on for approval. We had a twelve-inch main line that was located on the airport property across a fairly large ditch. Uh with that line being compromised, we would lose everything in that tank that's out there at the uh industrial park on the county side. So we went in and done a repair, or not a repair, but a a a move, a removal of that line and put another one deeper in the ditch. So we wouldn't have to worry about the the line, you know, compromising in the ditch and busting into, so. We had problems like that about uh five years ago where it did come into, and it was a, it was a major, major issue. But in doing that project, we had to take the fence down that the airport had for their Department of Homeland Security for the airport. And with that ditch being located like it is, we had to do, we're gonna have to do an offset on the fence, and that entails putting another fence up around. And I uh guaranteed the uh county mayor was saying that we would replace the fence back better, in the original or better condition. So I took it to the utility board and they approved for uh the fence to be relocated at a cost of seven thousand dollars. I tried three different companies to get a bid on this or a price, and no one would do a, would give me a price except for Bobby Cisco. Uh Bobby come back with a price of seven thousand dollars and the utility board approved for council to make that uh motion to carry on so we can get that fence redone. So, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate a a motion on that.
Any questions to Mr. Cliff on that?
He does a good job, matter of fact, he just uh put a fence down on my mom's property, he done excellent job.
Yeah, that's a, for what he's putting there, that's a pretty good rate, too, because it's a seven-foot fence, so.
Yeah, it's gonna be an eight-foot.
Eight-foot fence, ball.
So we gotta go back with the homeland security spec- specifications, and that's it.
Any other questions, is there a mo- motion to approve uh purchase of the fence, so move, motion by Mr. Hill.
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods, if you would cash your votes. Motion carried.
Thanks for closing my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cliff, next fire, I'll just tell you, Cliff, all the department heads was talking about you when you came up, because they knew you was gonna add some money. All of them, all of them laughing behind your back, man.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My general report, um had a total of twenty-one fire calls, had thirteen in the, thirteen in the city, had eight in the county. Uh training hour was two hundred and forty-eight, smoking alarm install was twelve, fire code inspection was thirteen. Um we are footed staff now with the hiring of Edzera Woods, uh he already has started working, he's getting shift now, so we have, we are footed staff. Uh we also have six new volunteer getting ready to start their training next month, that's my report.
Good, good, alright.
Next, please, Chief, Chief, uh Chief Zoll.
Good evening, how's everyone doing? My report just follows, we've had six hundred and thirty-nine calls for service, ninety-two citations was issued. We had fifteen accidents, seven were injury, eight were property damage only, thirty-nine arrests, eleven of them were juveniles, twenty-eight adults. We did one DUI saturation and two hundred and eight hours of training.
Alright, thank you, Chief Zoll, next Parks and Recreation, Mr. Ford.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Parks and Recreation Department reports on the following, uh we are into our seventh week of our youth summer golf golf league. There's about three more weeks left, I think Wednesday, the twenty-seventh will be the last day. Uh the exercise class for the adults continues on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and it's still going well, still growing. Uh the youth soccer registration, we're gonna start the signups in about a week and a half, and we'll run that all the way through August the twenty-eighth. Uh the pool has been pretty busy this summer, uh a lot of activity going on and uh we've got a couple of weeks left for, we're gonna close it on the fourth for the, for the summer. And lastly, swim lessons, and we have an adult aqua aerobics class going on, and it's seeming to be going well, it's awesome, so that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ford, next streets of sanitation.
Good afternoon. Uh we've been pressure washing sidewalks throughout the town, and we just gotta do asphalt several streets in town for last year's budget. And uh July, this month is uh the bulk of the item pick up again. That's my report.
Alright, thanks, y'all probably didn't hear what he said, but it's bulk item pickup uh this month, so you got until the end of this month, no, let's see if I can say this right, no tires, no refrigerant, uh coolant, so. And no demolition, so I saw a couple people have refrigerators out, they gotta take that somewhere else, because we can't take them up. So uh bulk item pickup this month, month of July.
Mr. Mayor, you said that uh the crew gonna be back this this month working on on the streets again?
The crew.
Yeah, doing the streets.
Oh, the asphalt must have fallen, yes, sir, uh-huh, they'll be back, um end of this weekend?
Probably back end of this week.
Yeah, okay, good. Uh and I, I guess I can say more down there on, on the new business on that.
Okay.
Um you have library report, Mr. Watkins.
I'm a little confused, and I think I'm in that outdoor exercise class that keeps growing.
That keep growing. I think I've been taking that class, too.
Uh had ten consultations for building this month, uh no permits written, uh nine building inspections, eight plumbing inspections, eight mechanical inspections, and twenty-five courtesy notices issued, and um you know, we uh, several yards being cleaned up right through town, I'm proud, they're they're cleaning up, excites me, I get motivated with that, so.
Did I leave, did we, did I get the copies of this that you, I was, I was gonna give it to them.
Okay, I gave you one copy, you need some more?
Alright, let me get that. Hand them out, uh I'll tell you something, we, I've, I don't necessarily, I guess I have to have council, I would like to have council approval or support for this. Um to give y'all a little backstory of what happens when it comes to uh areas that need to be cleaned up, because I know I get a lot of calls from various uh council people and community people just saying, hey, uh Mr. McKinney need to cut his grass, or Mr. Lau needs to, you know, pick up his debris, and y'all, I just use y'all as y'all's example. Uh but what I, what happens, our process, Mr. Watkins sent out a courtesy notice, uh just as a courtesy, um then we go through a.
I may not have made enough.
Here, I can get there, okay, there's enough, everybody can see it, so uh, so then we get to, when we finally get to the point where we, we clean it up as a city, um I say as a city, when Eddie's guys go out, right now, it's only, this, it was a fee set, the way the form was, it was, you don't clean it up, we'll go out and clean it at the owner's expense, at a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, well, that fee was set back, Eddie, how long, was that low?
Ten, fifteen years.
Uh yeah, at least, I would say at least fifteen years ago, um and with the cost of manpower, diesel and everything, we would, we'd lose money, and it's not, you know, not that we're, we're not in really here to make a profit off cleaning up people's property, but what I, me, uh Eddie and uh Mr. Watkins talked today, and what we want to start implementing, and we'll make this effective now, uh two hundred dollars per hour for overgrown grass, two fifty for removal of bu- bulky debris, and three hundred for demolition per hour. Um and I'll tell you where we based that cost, if you go rent a dozer, you looking at what, two hundred an hour, that's not counting the operator. Um if you go, you know, bush hogging, this is gonna cost you, so what we're gonna do is uh implement this, like I said, I just wanted y'all's support on this. Process we're gonna do now, when Mr. Watkins sent out the certified notice and all that, Ms. Abbott talked, basically, we don't have to go through this long, six-month process to go clean up somebody's property, so we'll go through that, and she's gotten with uh Ricky, and what we're about to do now, once we give them their ten-day notice, then we're going and we're sending Eddie's crew to clean it up, and they will have a certain amount of time to pay it, if it's not paid, by the time we send out property tax notices, that'll be put on the property tax, and honestly, how many letters that you sent out, they already done started, once they see that fine.
About twelve.
They've already started.
Five out of them already either cleaned up or cleaning up, so.
Yeah, so we don't really, we don't want his crew out cutting personal yards, but at the same time, for the neighbors that done, for the people that live next to somebody's house, there's grass that's grown up, we wouldn't want that next to us, so what we're gonna do is support, help them, and the ones that need a little motivation, we're gonna go out and clean it up. And I think Ricky said he had one guy called him and just said, hey, he want to hire the city to do it, because he don't want to fool with it.
He wanted to buy two hours of the city's time.
Two hours of the city's time, so I guess he was just gonna get what he could get out of it. Um but but I don't know, that was with the oil rate, a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, so um now that we'll implement this, hopefully this uh motivates more people to clean up. And what we will do is when I get, uh once we, we've already identified some properties that we know that we're gonna have to send our crew out to do, and when we do, uh we'll add this on there. But y'all, it's, it looks bad, and it makes the whole town look bad, it makes the whole town and neighborhood look bad when you got a house, we got some houses, people ain't cut the grass in two years, um so.
Let me ask you something, that house uh there on uh, I believe it's on margin, east margin, leave, used to be, belongs to Mr. Chris, who passed the way. Yeah, and I've seen all the houses.
That's one of the ones that's on the list that we talking about, yeah, so um you, you probably don't, we're going to, I don't wanna take Eddie's crew and take them off the street for two weeks to clean up houses, but some of the ones that's been abandoned and, you know, in bad shape for a while, we're gonna start there, and, you know, maybe we can get two or three a month, a month's time, some in-between downtime uh with Eddie's crew.
You need a motion for that?
Uh sure, let's go ahead and do it, uh just so I can have some support, and when they call, when we do it, then I can say, well, council voted on that.
I, I make the motion.
Taking the heat off of you, though.
Got, was that a motion?
I make, I make, I make a motion.
Got a motion by Ms. Ray, a second by Ms. Spinks, all in favor, I'm full of cash of votes, I'm in favor of it too, though, Mayor, so we'll take it together. Motion carried. Thank you, uh next EMS, Mattson.
Did we get that, did we get a copy? We got, um, how y'all doing right tonight? Let's see here, uh total responses for EMS.
Oh, he, I'm sorry, y'all didn't get it, they sent it to me, I must have sent it to Caribelle, I have it forwarded to you, I'm sorry. I didn't send them y'all's report.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll slow down so y'all can.
Get Caribelle's email before you leave and just send it to her, so I don't have to remember to send it to her.
Yeah, you betcha, I'll do it, I'll do it tonight, yeah, you bet, yeah.
He passed the buck, did I?
I got you, I got your back.
Thank you.
Alright, uh so for uh the month of June, uh total responses, uh two hundred and seventy-five by EMS, number's gone up a little bit from last month. Um emerg- of those, emergency, one twenty-seven, and non-emergency, one forty-eight. Uh we transported two hundred and thirty-nine of those, uh as far as the transfers from Bolivar General Hospital, sixty-nine total transfers from Bolivar General Hospital that we transported, sixty of those were to Jackson General, and nine of those were to Memphis. Uh two hundred and thirty-two seen calls in the city of Bolivar, nine in Hardeman County, and uh last but not least, uh we uh, there's ten calls that ambulances from either Jackson Chester or McNairy came in and made calls, uh ten calls in Bolivar city limits in June, so, yeah, that's my.
How the bills of June sound like?
We're keeping, yeah, hopping.
You said nine that had to come in from another county?
Uh ten.
Ten.
Ten, yep, nine was the number of uh uh transfers to Memphis.
Got you.
And nine calls that we did in Hardeman County.
Let me ask you this.
Yeah.
Um the county, I know y'all have an agreement with the county.
Yeah.
And first, the pay, y'all getting y'all paid to do the runs, do y'all go through the amni- I mean, through the insurance company or what?
I'm not involved with the billing, but it goes through the same process as far as uh the, when we do write the tickets, it goes through the insurance companies for the patients. So it's, there's, it's not a, it's, it's a um same as any other call we would do, yeah, between the patient and the billing.
So basically, probably go through the insurance thing.
Yeah, 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 most of the time, yeah, 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 most of the time, yeah.
And y'all are still ju- still running two ambulances here?
Yep, two, yep, two full-time, twenty-four-hour shifts, yep, yep.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Uh no Devco meeting last month, uh Main Street Hills getting started, getting ready, uh planning for barbecue blowout, so excited about that. Now we got Fourth of July, I guess the next big event in town will be the barbecue blowout, so we getting information from that soon. Uh moving on to new business, I don't have any old business, um first thing, let me find, so uh we have approval of next-gen software upgrade. Basically, what next-gen is, is the software, software um that they use in our front office, do tax collections and operate that front office. And it's, it's a little out of date, I don't, I don't have a clue how to work into that, don't really wanna know how to work into that. But I tell you this, when they get ready to look up information, if y'all remember how to, I don't wanna say anything to offend anybody up here, but when y'all used to have them floppy disks and Apple computers where you had to press F one and F two to move up and down before it was a mouse, that's how they operate that program. So it's a little out of date, just to, just to, you know, put it in perspective for you. So what I would like for you guys to do, we, we have this here, it'll come out our, um, we can take this out of our money, but it, we didn't have to do a bid to get the extra ten thousand, but I just wanted to have, let y'all guys know what it was, since it was, it was printed right there, ninety-three hundred, nine, nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cent. That includes, that includes um soft, all the software upgrades, as well as a new computer, y'all remember we talked about, I'm hiring a new person in the front office. Uh that's for their new computer and their software and all of that stuff, that in, that includes all of that. Um so did I care about, did I leave anything out on that software or anything? If you have any questions about that, don't ask me, because I, I, that's all I know when you go in it, that's how they open up stuff, so. Uh any questions on that? Is there a motion to approve?
Make sure.
Motion by Mr. Lau.
Second.
Second by Mr. Golden, we'll cash your votes. Motion carried, next we have approval from Ms. Miami Pope to our library board, uh we, we were short, I think the county has fi- five on the board, and we're supposed to have four, so we need to add one more to make our fourth member on the uh library board, so. I think we all know Ms. Miami Pope, um but I'd like to recommend her to be added to our um county library board, Baller point. So. Got a motion by Mr. Crawford, second by Mr. McKinney, we'll cash your votes. Motion carried, next we have resolution twenty-two zero six, adopting a consultant selection policy for projects funded in whole or in part by the federal highway administration or the Tennessee Department of Transportation. Uh basically, I remember we got that, that grant from T-Dot for the multimodal highway, I'm sorry, multimodal grant for the sidewalks on Highway uh sixty-four. We have to pass this resolution for consulting, so that's basically all this is.
So move.
Motion by Mr. McKinney, second by Ms. Spinks, cash your votes, please. Motion carried, next our first reading of ordinance twenty-two zero zero eight, ordinance, uh amend ordinance twenty-two zero zero seven related to budget fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three. If y'all know, we usually do budget amendments at the end of the year, but I'll tell you what we got here, and I think I called, I tried to call everybody, um to let y'all sort of know I think I called, I tried to call everybody, um, to let y'all sort of know what was going on. If you can remember, I, let's layer, how long ago was we talking about?
God, no, I've been talking about it for a while.
Somebody else. Uh, but anyway, he's. We've, Water Street's been needing to be paved for a while. But we applied for a grant, in my defense, Mr. McKinney, you gotta support me on this part too. We applied for a grant to do the pavement through T-Dot and we received the grant. Well, as y'all know how grants work, sometimes they can be a pain. And this is one of them ones that was that way. We applied and got the grant and we had a match for it, so what our, when we talked about this, it's probably been at least probably four years, I would think. Well, Larry said five. When we talked about this, the cost of asphalt and the cost of this project, it was gonna be cheaper for us to do the grant and use our match. Well, now that we've gotten all this stuff and we finally got a bid, we went through COVID and everything, did bid, opened us people in bid and anyway, long story short, we got the bid back and the bid came in at nine hundred thousand and some change to asphalt Water Street and Lafayette Street. And our match of that was gonna be around four hundred thousand, I think, like three sixty or something, right at four hundred thousand. If y'all know, we only put a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget every year to asphalt our roads. Um, basically, when the state do it, when you add engineers, when you add all this other stuff, it gets a lot more expensive. Eddie can call Mr. Fowler and they come down here and pro, provide asphalt all our roads for that much. But what happened, when this kind, this stuff came back last week while they were paving, we got all the paving done with our original budget last year for the one fifty. I didn't, I didn't wanna, I wasn't about to come at y'all with five hundred thousand to pave one, two streets. But I did want it to be done and I didn't wanna put off Water Street. Lafayette is bad too, but Water Street is real bad. And I didn't wanna put that off another year just because of all this grant stuff. So I asked Mr. Fowler if we could keep, if they could give us this, if they were gonna give us the same rate that they gave us, uh, for asphalt per ton and we just add this to our, uh, bill from last year, if we could do that. And he told me, give me a price. He's estimating less than a hundred and seventy-five thousand for what the state was gonna charge us nine hundred thousand for. Don't ask me, I couldn't tell you what all that includes. But anyway, um, so this here, if we do this budget amendment, we, we will be getting water, all of Water Street and all of Lafayette from Ma, Maine, from Maine to Madison. So from Lafayette, from right there at the old Willa building, all the way back up to Madison Street and, and Water Street. And if y'all have rode any one of them, especially behind the car wash, that's a big one over there, so don't hit it. It's bad. Um, we're gonna do both of them. So that's what this is. I went on and did it, but I just was hoping y'all would be okay with it. And if y'all don't pass it, I don't know if I'm gonna be good for you. So fix this for me is what I'm asking.
I'll make a motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion. We are passing this to next month.
Look, Fowler's coming with that asphalt. He's got to go somewhere.
I make a motion that we approve, uh, ordinance, uh, number two-two zero-zero-eight.
Got a motion by Mr. McKinney, second by Mr. Lau, if you will cash your votes. I'm just gonna tell them to drop that, yeah, all the way on New Street, that whole thing. Alright, motion, Carrot. I'm pretty sure the people over on Water Street is gonna really appreciate it.
I really do.
Alright, we got anybody in the community developed? Alright, it's motion to, John?
So moved.
Motion, second by, cash your votes, we can go. Mick done already closed it up.
He know we all agreed to that one.
You're right.